We'll move on to item number two, recognize Doug Fox of Tax Administration, Jamie Tanner. Tanner evaluations.
Thank you, Jimmy. Just want to give you a brief update for our reappraisal that's going on right now. Our last reappraisal was done in 2015 and we have to do one every eight years required by the Department of Revenue. This is our first in-house parcel review. So our staff is actually busy with every parcel we can get to. All approved parcels, we still got about 2,000 or so left to finish. And then when we get all that completed, we got key in our CAND system, all changes we made. We've got roughly 25,000 parcels and about 12,000 approved parcels. I ask, I want to introduce Jimmy Tanner, he's here with Tanner Evaluations, he's going to put on a presentation for you a little bit more about the appraisal, but I ask him if we were to do a full measuring list, it would cost us about $30 a parcel, or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we've done that in our office, we've just added one position. Our staff has done a great job. Some of the challenges we've had, I'm sure you're tired of hearing about COVID, got us to say, you know, quarantines and we took some time off and we didn't know how to go around houses, we didn't know how to approach public for a while, that was a challenge. We purchased some new field software, which has been a blessing to us. We take a tablet out to the field, it'll tell us what parcel we're on. We can view the tax data right there, we mark on that tablet, come back, we upload it, so we don't have paper and maps like we used to, so made things a lot better. But we had to learn that software. And constant changes of sale prices, this market's been tough because things have just been growing at rapid rates, so that's been a challenge. One piece we did do ourselves is called Schedule Values, and that's kind of why we're here tonight, is each of you have gotten a copy of the Schedule Values on the Flash Drive, it's a big lengthy document, has to be able to cover everything in the county, it's a blanket type document. And it's required by law that we present that to you guys, and then you guys schedule a public hearing. So following, Mr. Tanner's going to do a presentation, following that, we ask you to schedule a public hearing on September 19th. Also, a hard copy of Schedule Values will be at our office and at County Administration Office for the public to come by and view, if they want to view. I think that's all I have right now, I'm going to introduce Jimmy Tanner with Tanner Evaluations, they're the company that we contracted with to do our commercial review as well as our Schedule Values.
Good evening, Commissioners. Well, we want to talk a little bit about reappraisal, about what it is, and just to kind of repeat what Doug said, your staff's been doing a tremendous amount of work on the residential side, we contracted with Alexander to help with the commercial review and do the Schedule Values and stuff like that, but your office has been really busy for the last couple of years. What we're going to cover today or talk about a little bit is basically what is a reappraisal? What does the tax value really mean? You know, we deal with a lot of people and there's a lot of versions of what people think tax value really is. Where does this tax value or market value come from, or where do we get that from? Then we're going to talk about equalization, that's something that'll probably be more important to you when you start later down, when you start figuring tax rates and, you know, revenue neutral rates. And we're going to show you, we're not here to tell you, you know, these values, this is what it is, or this house is this, but what we're going to show you is some examples around the county of what things are selling for and what the current value is, so you can kind of get a picture of where we at, where things is going, because we don't have no choice, we have to go to the market value. And then the new valuation we're going to talk a little bit about, once the reappraisal is done, we send the value notices out, you know, talk a little bit about the appeal notices that the people get, what they can do, and what's contained in that valuation notice. Okay, in the reappraisal, one of the key things is there's five different revenue streams or value streams that comes into the tax office, real estate is only one of them streams. So, you know, later at the end of the year, when you start talking about revenue neutral tax rates, things like that, this is the important stuff that you need to know. Real estate's going to 100% of market value, but all these other four avenues is already 100% of the year. So, you know, that's the reason if, let's just pick a number, if the values go up 20%, revenue neutral doesn't mean the tax rate can drop 20%, because it's only one piece of that puzzle. And so again, it's just making sure that all the properties is equated, and all the properties is treated equitably, and then following North Carolina general statutes is required, because everything we do is by the statutes of North Carolina. One of the important things is when we look at the system property, which is that fifth piece, you know, they're at 100%, but we'll talk about that in a little more detail in a few minutes. Now, what is tax value, what does tax value really mean? There's a little confusion, you know, if you talk to people, they'll, you know, tell us all the time, well, we understand, but we think our tax value is always less than what things is worth. And, you know, a lot of people believe that. Just to put a little kind of humor in what we do and how we have to look at properties, you know, when we talk to people and they thinking about their house, their home, you know, this is kind of how they see it, you know, and then when they decide they want to sell their property, you know, they start getting the vision of, you know, this is what my house really is, and of course, when us tax guys come along, you know, this is the way, the picture they want us to look at, you know, so you got a lot of different views of what value is and what things is worth. But when we talk about what tax value really means, North Carolina, a lot of states is different, in North Carolina, we're a market value state. That means that in the year of reappraisal, which Alexander County will be January 1, 2023, we're supposed to be on market value, and that means 100% of market value on the reappraisal date. Now, you know, we reappraise on January 1, 2023, values can go up or down after that, it's irrelevant because we lock in on that date. Them values don't change again until you do another reappraisal. So over time, values do get less, and I think that's where a lot of people get confused, that tax value should always be less than what it's really worth. It's not because that's the case, it's because the values is locked in, the tax value stays the same over that period and the market value can go up. Especially in the last few years, it's really gone up even though your tax value hasn't changed any. And so it's 100% market value over reappraisal day, and our tax value is the same value that we'd put on a property if it would be exposed to the market to be sold. It'd be easy if we had a big dartboard, we could just throw something out and plump these values out, but we don't, we have to sit and try to come up with these market values, so we start thinking about where does the market value come from? Well, on residential, the market value is pretty much set by buyers and sellers, because that's what we look at. We're fortunate in that we've had a tremendous amount of sales over the last couple of years, so that makes this job easy. And certain times when the market's not good, it's a little harder to do reappraisals because you don't have a lot of information, you have to rely on other sources that may not be as reliable, but anyway, buyers and sellers of residential properties is pretty much what predicts what that market value is or sets that market value. Commercial properties is not a lot different, except we use a lot of different things, rents, leases, income data, and sales information on the commercial. So basically, when we talk about it, the market value, they're basically set by the property owners and property owners because of what they buy and sell properties for, lease for, and such as that. If you break down a reappraisal and what it is, or revaluation and what it is, all we do is we take the market data, interpret the market data, and then we build a schedule value that we can apply to come up with a value for all the properties that haven't sold, and that's basically what a reappraisal is. If everything in the county sold, it'd be easy, we'd just set what it's sold for and we'd be good. But, you know, when you got 25,000 properties and a thousand sales, you still have the 24,000 properties that you've got to put a value on. So we take that data from all the sold properties and we apply it back to the unsold properties. Now, just to give you an idea of where we at in relation to market value as of today, if we took some sales that have occurred since January 1 of 2022 to current, and we've around the county, and what we're showing you here is, here's a property that's sold, here's what it's sold for, the date it's sold for, and here's the current value as of today. And we give you a ratio, because everything in tax law is based off a ratio, the median statistics, we talk about median ratios, ratios, and the ratio is simply the tax value divided by the sale price gives you the ratio. If a house sells for $100,000 and our tax value is $60,000, that's a 60% ratio of market value. So here's a property that in the Hidden Knight area, sold on April 22 of this year for $400,000, the current value on that property is $154,679. You know, that's 38.5% ratio. You go to the Stormy Point area, here's a property that sold for $360,000 on March 22 of this year, the current value is $209,827, so that's a 58% ratio. Over the Sugarloaf area, here's a property that sold for $267,000, the current value is $136,936, so that's again about 51% ratio. And if you, as you can see, you go around the county, things is, you know, starting to go into a range. Ellendale sold for $720,000 in February, the current value is $368,013, that's a 51% ratio. Bethlehem sold for $570,000, the current value is $366,381, 64% ratio. Wittenburg sold for $335,000 in April, our current value is $161,506, that's 48%. Here's a multifamily home sold for $185,000, and its current value is $99,105, so again, 53% ratio. So as you can see from some of these examples, it's not just one area, it's not just certain type, it's everything, everybody knows the market has drastically increased over the last few years, which is good. I mean, if we talk about tax values, I know everybody's probably not going to agree and say that's a great thing, but, you know, everybody doesn't have trust accounts and bonds and savings and stuff like that, but most people that own a property, that is their investment, so we really do want that property to go up. So, you know, when I come from the angle of saying, you know, value's going up is good, that's pretty much everybody's investment, and we don't want our values to drop, so, you know, it's a good thing that our properties is going up. Now, what you're just saying, if we take all the sales from January 1 to today, that occurred in Alexander County, the sales, warranted sales, the median ratio for themselves is 58%. So if we, you know, we buy statutes to go to market value, you can see how big a gap we have in there. Now, I'm not telling you what numbers is, but you can kind of take these numbers and kind of, you know, figure some of this stuff out, where the values is going. And it's no accident to anybody, you know, I'm out doing, we don't have staff that does this, when I come in and do a commercial review, I do it. I think I've met a couple of Commissioners out in the field, I've met one's wife, so, I mean, I'm out doing, we talk to these taxpayers all the time, so they understand the values is, you know, that's the good thing, people realize what's coming. Now, when we talk about equalization, we're talking about utilities, you know, statutes require that we have to be at market value. Now, there's something that nobody ever talks about, and I think it's important for Commissioners to know, statutes also require that there's equalization for utility companies. Only five sources of income or value streams, utilities is one of them, they're at 100% of market value. If we don't put markets, values to market value, then they get equalization. If the ratio, if that ratio's less than 90%, they get dollar to dollar reduction of exactly what that ratio is, if it's 80%, they get 20% reduction off their values. That's a big loss to a county. They get equalization in the first, fourth, and seventh year, so you're already giving money away, from the fourth year on, you was giving money away to the seventh year, that's normal, but, you know, in the first year, you don't want to start out in the first year giving money away, so you don't have much choice, the hands is tied, you have to kind of go to market value, and one of the big things is make sure you don't get triggered if you're below 90%. And that's no exception, that statute's totally required, and utilities look at it every year, so we don't have much choice on that. Now, on the value notice, the evaluation notices, when the reappraisal was done, you know, the tax office, why they'll do is send out evaluation notice to every property owner, and in that evaluation notice, you know, we expect to mail these things out probably around February, March, when we get everything finished up. It'll have in there what the new assessed value is as of January 1, 2023. It's also going to contain some more information other than just the value, it's going to give them some information regarding the appeal process, it's going to give them the instructions for doing the appeal process. You know, if somebody's got a property, it's got a problem that we didn't know about, we want to know about it. We don't really want to discourage appeals. If somebody's property's worth 200, and we got it for 195, that's probably not one to appeal, but if we got a property at 200,000, it's got issues and it's not worth that, that's the ones we want to know about. So we don't discourage appeals, we really want appeals because that allows us to fix some things that we didn't know about. And if the value's reasonable and fair, somebody opens the notice and says, well, wow, it went up, but, you know, if I was going to sell my property, I wouldn't set it for less than this, then they don't need to do anything. That value's what it is, only if they feel like that value's unfair is when they need to do something. When a taxpayer files an appeal, the options on that thing is they can either, there's a portion that they can fill out and send into our office, or they can just simply call the number, just on the information, and schedule an appointment, you know, they're going to appeal, they want somebody to look at it, they want to come in and talk to somebody. Now, the appeal process, you know, we do have some taxpayer residents that don't feel like, you know, they have the opportunity to be heard or anything, and that's really not true, there are five different levels of appeal as a result of a reappraisal. The first step is the informal appeal through Alexander County Tax Office, who wants to do the job. If somebody feels like something's wrong, they can sit and come in, it's really informal, I think this, here's the problem, I got pictures, I got water damage, we didn't see it, so that's the first step. The second step, they'll get a notice saying, you know, something changed or not changed, if they're still not satisfied, then they can file appeal to the Board of Equalization Review here in Alexander County. That's kind of the first formal setting. If they're not satisfied with that, they can go to North Carolina Property Tax Commission, if they're not satisfied with that, they can go to North Carolina Court of Appeals, and if they're not satisfied with that, they can go to North Carolina Supreme Court. We don't have many cases get there, but that process is there for somebody that felt like, you know, that they wanted an appeal or value reduction and it didn't happen. Now, some of the information in the appeal process for somebody that's wishing to appeal to give us that would be helpful is if they've got some recent sales of comparable properties, you know, I'm one house in 50 in a subdivision, and I had four, my neighbors sold their properties in the last year, and mine wouldn't sell for that, that's the information we like to have. Damage that may be known that we don't know about, if somebody had a leaky roof five years ago, the roof may be fixed, may be new, but it could be water damage inside, we don't know that. Things like that, property characteristics that we don't know about, we might have some finished areas on a home that's not finished, you know, obviously we can go in a home, so we don't know. If they got a recent fee appraisal, they might have been doing a refinancing, nothing to do with buying and selling, but they could have had a recent fee appraisal done for something else they're doing. Or a recent sale listing, or, you know, offer to purchase, or something like that we can look at. On the results of appeal, once somebody appeals in each one of these steps, they'll get a notification, and it'll tell them what the result of that appeal will be, and it'll also give them the information for that next level, so it's not going to be, well, we didn't do anything, that's it. It's going to tell them what the decision was, and then it's going to tell them, you know, if you're not satisfied, it gives you the information and instructions to do the next step. And the results of the appeal, that's the thing that people need to know, is, you know, when you appeal a property, there's three things that can happen. It can be reduced, it can be increased, or it can be simply left the same, you know, based on the information that we get and the research that we do. And that's pretty much it, we did want to provide some information about what was done in this reappraisal, you know, we're actually in the final review process now, there's still some field work that's being done, we're getting to the final value review, which is a lengthy process, and when we get all that done, that's when we'll do a lot of checks and balances, and then we'll send each notice values out, and that's when everything's done. So, are there any questions or...
I'm sure you've been busy, 25,000, that's a lot of stuff.
I'm lucky, I only have a small portion of them, but their staff has really been busy for the last couple of years. I mean, it's, you know, I've been in this business for, it's just doing the work, it's the same as it was 30 years ago, but it's not, it's a different world now. Walking around people's properties now, you know, it's automatically assumed that you're not doing something good, even though we got surface pros and badges and county cars and things like that, but we also see from the homeowner's side, you know, they don't know who we are while we're there, we just show up, so, but it has been a lot of work that's been put in.
Just for instance, how does this percentage compare to other neighboring counties or people that you've done reevaluation, how does this percentage look in comparison?
All the counties that's been, in the last couple of years, has been in the same market of increases. You know, a lot of, and sometimes if you was going to compare, you got to be careful because a lot, most of the counties do four-year reappraisals, some do eight-year reappraisals, so you also got to look at that length of the cycle, but this is not unusual for a lot of counties. I know one county that is, this is a fourth-year reappraisal, and they're going up over 50% as on average, some of them going more than that. So, I mean, this is not just North Carolina, this is everywhere, but, you know, this is where the market's been taking.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I appreciate that explanation, you know, how basically there's a date, and they set that date, and it's the same, and everything's basically the same until there's a new reevaluation. There've been several times when Doug's come out, you know, Doug, or Doug and other members, you know, other employees from the tax office have come by, job, where I'm a residential home builder, where we're building a house, we're building a couple houses, or something like that, you know, and, you know, I can remember one example, in one, you know, started home, small home neighborhood in Bethlehem, you know, saying to Doug, "Doug, why in the world are y'all putting $106,000 tax value on these houses that we're selling for $150?" You know, and him saying, "We gotta go by, we gotta go by, you know, the numbers that were, you know, that date," you know, which I didn't catch on to, Doug, I mean, I know you know what you're talking about, but, you know, I didn't necessarily catch on to it. And, you know, I've also had conversations with Doug and guy, you know, where they've come out, and I happened to be at one of our jobs, you know, and I've said, "Yeah, this house is three beds, two and a half bath, 1,800 square feet, and it's under contract for 352, and it's a box with bottom side." You know, and they just go, "Oh, my gosh." You know, and I'm going, "Yeah, oh, my gosh." But when, when you're in my industry, thankfully, things have changed, come back down to some degree, but, you know, there was a time when I was paying $92 a piece for something, and I was paying $48 a piece for five six, for seven sixteenths, which is just a half inch OSB, $48 a piece.
And that was a contract, of course.
You know, and, you know, we were paying $12 for a two-by-four stud. You know, and I mean, and it's just the world we live in, housing prices have gone crazy, in my opinion. You know, what the world says, my house that I live in, that I've been in for 10 years, you know, says to me is insane, but I think one thing that we need to, we need to make sure that we, we make citizens of the county and the public understand is, you know, by statutory, by statutory rules, we have, you know, this is how it has to be done. And, you know, the examples, the examples that you had, none surprise me, because, you know, I see the real estate industry and construction industry and see how crazy things have gotten. But I've felt like for a long time, not only as a Commissioner, but also as a citizen, that our tax values have been very low.
We lost, but not to interrupt you, we lost value in 2015.
If you remember, Josh, we lost a couple percent value countywide in 2015, because our market hadn't rebounded as quick as everybody else's had.
And I think in 2015, there was a pretty significant disparity from one part of the county to the other.
Right.
Where with this, it's everywhere, everything, everything is going up significantly, you know, and I'm, you know, and I won't mean it's bad, but I'm glad to see that Bethlehem, Sugarloaf, Stormy Point, Hidden Knight, Wittenburg, you know, everywhere, it's not just a one place issue, you know, it's not just one community or two communities, it's not just what's at the lake, you know, it's not just what's, you know, because, I mean, that's, I mean, honestly, that's the fair way for it to be, and I, you know, these guys will attest, I don't like paying taxes anymore. I despise them more than most, let's just say that. You know, but it is what it is. And like you said, I think it's, I think people need to be proud that their property is worth more than it has been, you know, which may allow them, you know, allow them to sell out at some point and move to more beach if that's what they want to do, or, you know, take out an empty line to put in food for their grandkids, or, you know, just kind of whatever they want to do, I think, you know, trying to make the best of it.
Like Jimmy said, we're going to continue to monitor this market, because, you know, there are talks about the market changing with interest rates, and we'll continue to watch the market up till January the 1st, and we can make adjustments, and we have to adopt the schedule value so that we start moving forward, and we can make adjustments with factors.
And this is just my, this is just my opinion, I don't know that all the national, all the national housing news necessarily applies to this, to our area and to North Carolina 100%.
Right.
You know, for the National Association of Home Builders and National Association of Realtors and all this kind of thing, all these places that we get information from all the time, you know, North Carolina is the second most desired place a state can move to in the United States. And where other places have slowed down significantly, we, you know, we're not seeing it yet, so we'll see.
Yeah, we, you know, in this business, unfortunately, we're always looking forward, because, you know, we start these projects two years out to work toward this date, so we always, you know, every day we predict what's coming, and so, you know, we don't think the market's going to continue escalating like it's going, but we don't think it's going to collapse either, you know, like some people say. And historically, North Carolina doesn't go with, you know, nationally, we, you know, when things fall out, it doesn't happen here, so that's the good thing.
Unless something changes in the next group you're looking at, we're looking at about 58, actually, to tell us yourself.
Well, you know, it's right now, on average, median, and that, when we say 58%, when you take all these sales and the sums here and here, that median ratio is the midpoint, so 58, so, you know, you got some that's less than that, you got some that's going to be more than that, but on average, the ratio right now is about 58%.
And we've ran some things overall, 45%, but that's overall, some peoples may go up 80%, some people may come down a little bit, might change much, so it depends on, there's a lot of factors that go in, it's not a blanket, everybody's going to get 50% increase on their, on their property, every one of them's handled different.
Already grabbed enough of it.
And, you know, some of these things is not related directly to reappraisal, you know, if somebody completely renovated a house, and it was just called, we didn't know about it, you know, that's going to be a big increase, had nothing to do with reappraisal, you know, but it was called after reappraisal, so, you know, some people will have some significant increases, but they completely renovated the If they completely renovated a house last year, or if somebody built a, a big addition on their house, it just happened to be picked up this year. So, you know, sometimes when you see these crazy increases in values, not just reappraisal. It's reappraisal and compounded with something that, that, you know, has been happening, so.
How like going to dance? Anybody else?
I will say this, on your sample properties that you demonstrated in the package on closings for, during the 2022 year, I actually handled three of those properties subsequently. And those were all arms-lent transactions with multiple parties owning them. And even one of those properties, the purchaser after closing was offered a substantial war in the day paid for it if they would just get out.
It's, it's not unusual still that, you know, whatever the house goes on the market, it's going to close above that because of people getting a bid and war. You know, so you know you're in good times when that's happening. You know, I argue with rule of thumb, when we didn't have many sales, is we was looking at four sale prices and taking 6, 7% off of that as an estimated sale price. And now we'd have to add money to it, so it's just a different market.
Now, I was also glad to see that you pulled sample properties from different portions of the county.
Yeah, we, we wanted to, basically the point is that it's the whole county, it's not just the lake. It's not just one area. It's, it's, and it's not just Alexander Countywide, it's statewide. It is, it's markets everywhere.
And part of it is just inflation in general.
Yes, it is.
You know, I mean, the United States is experiencing levels of inflation that it hasn't experienced in a long, long time. And guess what? That also affects, you know, econ, you know, economic features that inflation very simply means the dollar's not worth what it was. You know, your dollar won't get you as much as it did before. Well, that just means everything that you buy or own costs more dollars, you know, so. We can, you can, any other question? Appreciate you guys.
Okay, and just one last thing. When we get, when we get into the point, getting ready, we'll probably come back before y'all give you a little more detailed information, you know, on exactly what's going to be mailed out. So, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, do you have a motion to approve the 2023 schedule evaluations or values taken in real estate? And, and, so we move with a public hearing, all the susceptible ones, I think.
So we move.
Okay. Have a motion, that's a...
Say it.
All favor, right? Motion to adjourn, thank you, Jim. Next item of business is Alexander County Energy Outreach Plan. And I recognize Mr. Thomas Mitchell, our Alexander County Energy Outreach.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, this is short and sweet tonight. So, uh, before you is the, uh, Energy Outreach Program. Our plan to, um, do outreach in the county to let folks know about our energy programs, uh, low-income energy assistance and, uh, crisis intervention. So the reason we're looking at it now instead of during our consolidated meeting is this is actually a couple of days past due, but as I understand, this didn't make it to you last year. So I think this may be the first time you're seeing it as a consolidated board. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys are familiar with this. Uh, it's a, it's an annual thing, so we'll bring it to you each year. Uh, but next year, we'll get it into the proper quarter, um, in our consolidated meeting. But, uh, I'll entertain questions if you guys have any. Uh, but it will require, um, the chair's signature at the end of the evening.
I think this is the same thing we've had before, or is it a different thing?
We don't think about needing to even go right now, but, you know, it's...
Seems like a crazy time to talk about, but...
Yeah. Anyone have a question?
That's a good word, just a lot of people.
Yeah, it does. Things are pretty tough now, too.
Are there any other questions? I know you're taking a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
That's a...
Say it.
All favor, right? Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, our next item of business, our Register of Deeds Job Classification Powerpoint. Then recognize, uh, Register of Deeds, Mr. Scott Heinz, A-Rod.
Good evening, and, uh, Mr. French, Jamie, Chairman Reese and Commissioners. Thanks for letting me talk to you tonight. And, uh, for anybody that doesn't know, most of you know me, but I'm Scott Heinz, the Register of Deeds. But before I begin, I'm also the First Vice Commander of the Local American Legion Post 170. And our girls, our junior fast pitch girls took third place in the state championship, uh, match this weekend. So I want to commend them. And, um, I'd like to, uh, recognize the team who included Anis, Aniston Chapman, Laney Russell, Zaley Brown, Katie Kerrigan, Kalista Hampton, Asia Jackson, Olivia Smith, Hattie Eckard, Millie Baumgartner, Mackenzie Payett, Laney Mayberry, Gabby Pritchard, Gina Mason, Leila Elliott and Kayla Hamby. And the Post 170 Junior Coaching Staff included Kylie Hamby, Rusty Chapman and Courtney Smith. And, uh, kind of connected to this, um, what was her name? Leila Elliott won the Home Run Derby on a Friday night before the tournament started. So I just wanted to commend the girls on a job well done and a, and a good season. So, as I begin, I'm Scott Heinz, your Register of Deeds. And on behalf of my staff, Joshua Bowman, Don Rudisell, Jonathan Barnes, and my newest staff member, Bailey Peel Sigmund. I present this briefing and urge county authorities to upgrade the rank and job structure in my office. This is a subsequent appeal to my request to upgrade my staff's positions. This briefing provides justification for the staff grade increases as well as provides an update on my office. I feel my office is one of the most important offices in the county, and this briefing serves to inform listeners about that. I was last here before you in November of 2020, when I gave an update and made an appeal for grade increases. To be clear, this is not an appeal for a salary increase, although I'm sure my staff would appreciate that. But I'm asking for increase in ranks or grades for my office to be more equitable with other county offices and the positions in those offices. Uh, here's a look at, but before that happens, here's a look at what's happening. And, uh, real estate seems to be the theme of the night. And, um, you can see the chart. Um, this is, uh, what we've done, uh, for the past few years, from 2018 to 2022. Actually, from 2011 to 2022. Every node is a monthly, uh, revenue generation. And you can see it's, it's gone up above $50,000. So, as you can see, for the past four or five years, the trend line has been rising significantly. The blue line with the nodes is actually monthly revenue taken in by my office for that corresponding month. The dotted red line, uh, shows that the revenue is now trending above $50,000 a month. In my office, revenue includes all excise taxes collected as well as recording fees and service fees taken in by my staff. The 13 and a half percent rise in revenue generation over the last year comes after a nearly 70% increase in revenue generation since 2018. Um, also, the revenue has increased over 106% since fiscal year 2015. That means over the last seven years, the Register of Deeds office has increased revenue by around 15% each year. Finally, increasing, increasingly ascending revenue also means our transaction with customers is way, way up. Also, my office has taken on this increase at a time when my staffing has had over 100% or 100% turnover in the past two years. I have been lucky to hire excellent replacements, some with ROD experience, some young and energetic and bright employees. And just this past month, Bailey Sigmund joined our team in looks to keep our high operations tempo going. And she's the daughter of our beloved Lake Commissioner, Dr. Jeff Hill in Renaco. Also, thanks to Mr. French and the Commissioners in the fall last year for providing me a part-time position so I could hire one of my former staff, Don Rudisell. This has become, uh, very important because with a young and inexperienced staff, she's our, uh, continuity that kind of keeps the glue together, that keeps the, um, training going. And, um, the learning is, is constantly going on. And, um, so anyway, next, uh, we'll talk about the importance of, uh, my office. It's very important. And, um, we have mandatory government functions. And here's some of the details about what my office means to the county. Chapter 161 of the General Statutes is central to the establishment and mandatory function of the Register of Deeds. We have over 1,500 pages of North Carolina general statutes to read, comprehend and implement in the office, run by an elected official, me. Uh, and the oath of office requirements distinguishes us from other county offices. Our oaths are also required to be, uh, recorded at the clerk of courts office. Notorial powers reside in my office. And my staff and I, by virtue of our role and responsibilities, administer oaths to notary publics, uh, to couples getting married and to other oaths as required, which puts me and my staff in a unique oath administering position and on an equal level with judges, mayors, magistrates, Secretary of State, and even members of the General Assembly, all who can administer oaths. All employees in my office are hired and appointed by me. I administer the oath of office to my deputies and assistants who are public officials. It also distinguishes my office's staff from other county employees. My office houses all public records related to real property in Alexander County. Thus, my office is an integral part of the real estate transactional process. Our recordation of documents must take place before transfer of monies and dispersments can occur and basically before people can be given the keys to the property that they're purchasing. My office, by design, is placed at a greater risk for liability than most other departments in the county. Um, that's because if we don't record the documents, the deeds properly, or whatever documents are being recorded, uh, we can, um, we can be sued for that. And, uh, neighboring counties have been sued in the past. As, as far as I know, Alexander County's not, uh, Register of Deeds office has not been sued. In fiscal year '22, my office processed legal documents that accounted for over $199 million in land transactions in Alexander County. That is based on 397,000 or close to 400,000 collected in excise taxes. Excise tax is $2 per thousand, so a $500,000 home, take off the thousand, you've got 500. Times two is $1,000 we would collect for excise tax. And also, that valuation of 199,000 for the year doesn't include, uh, inheritance property or gift property, people that just, uh, transfer property over to relatives or whoever they want to. So, the Register of Deeds office is error-free environment, and that's what I was talking to. If we don't record properly, uh, then it, it would be bad. This is a lofty goal, and we correct mistakes as soon as possible during the recording process. We double check, triple check, and even quadruple check ourselves to make sure these very important records are as free from error as possible. The consequences of poor and inaccurate, inaccurate recording is a dire... As Register of Deeds offices, like I've said, in neighboring counties have been sued in the past because of, uh, inaccurate indexing of, uh, the documents and other reasons. Additionally, we record and maintain vital records, that's birth, death and marriage certificates. This, too, is very important responsibility since there's so much fraud and identity theft these days. We must use discretion and discernment when preparing certified documents, certified copies of documents, allowing access and providing information to the public. Nefarious people could use Alexander County vital records to perpetuate identity crimes. And we are the first line of defense in that realm in the Register of Deeds office with regard to vital records. Finally, we are self-sustaining. As our revenue generated for the county exceeded our operating expenses to include staff wages and salaries. Fiscal year '22, we brought in over $617,000, nearly 400,000 of which was raised in excise taxes. Our expenses amounted to about 508,000, of which 40% of those, that amount was sent to the state government in Raleigh. I also returned nearly 55,000 from my allocated budget to the taxpayers, only using about 90% of what you, the Commissioners, allocated to my office last year. To reiterate, the Register of Deeds office is critically important to the real estate enterprise in Alexander County. Over $199 million in valuation transfers, and we maintain those vital records that, um, to maintain against identity theft. Next slide, please. This next slide shows upgraded positions over the past few years. The Register of Deeds positions have remained historically low, at least since December of 2018, when I was, when I took office, and likely has been at that level for years and years prior. I've made appeals on behalf of my office on multiple occasions for grade increases, for ROD staff to be more commensurate with important and com, the importance and complexity of the requirements of my office. In November 2020, I appealed to you, the Board of Commissioners, in a monthly meeting for grade increases. The result and feedback from that briefing was that I should put these measures into the upcoming 2021, '22 budget proposal. So I did. This grade increase proposal was denied with comments from county manager that we would get pay increases. Those would be approved, but the grade increases would have to follow in a later date. The grade increase proposal was included again in this, the current budget year that we're in, '22 to '23, but no discussion between county officials and myself, the Register of Deeds, occurred. During the three-to-four month budget planning period, no meetings were offered to me to discuss my budget proposal, which included the grade increases. After repeated calls to county administration over the course of this time, an offer to meet a budget planning committee on one day, June 13th, 5:00 p.m., one week prior to the board's vote to pass the budget, I was unable to meet, to go to this meeting on this one specific date and time. So nothing happened, there was no discussion between me and any county official concerning my proposed budget. During the past few years and during my appeals to increase my office's grades, I've identified a dozen or so positions in the county that were increased. On the screen shows, uh, Director of Human Resources and as well as the Sheriff, Code Enforcement Office, Solid Waste Director. All of these positions listed were highly ranked before the grade increases. My office positions languish at their current low levels of grade 62 and 63 for an assistant. This slide depicts some of those increases. As Register of Deeds, I feel my inclusion in the budget process or actually lack of inclusion is unsatisfactory and have to go outside the budget process to make these appeals, such as this public forum today. I appealed to the board once again for... I appeal to the board once again for the grade increases, or it's so denied, I expect an explanation as to why my office is not as important as I believe it is and as the facts that I've just laid out to you would suggest they're important. So tell me why I'm wrong. And here's my next slide, please. And so here's what I'm suggesting. I've listed some of the positions that are similar in rank to the positions I'm trying to adjust my staff. Registered deeds as elected officials currently ranked lower than the library director. Budgets for the library and ROD offices are relatively similar in Alexander County, but the library gets over eighty thousand dollars more than my office to operate in the upcoming fiscal year. I don't know how much revenue that the library brings in, but I venture to guess that it's nowhere near the six hundred and seventeen thousand that my office brought in. I'm asking that my, well, my assistant register deeds is graded lower than the children's librarian, which is an honorable position, but from my perspective, it's nonsensical that my second-in-command, who runs the register deeds office when I am not there or out, should not be recognized as important as a children's librarian or a branch manager or as important as a level-one social worker or an animal control officer. I feel misshelving a book is not as legally consequential as misindexing a legal document worth millions of dollars. And just recently, and I think Marty, you were part of it, the sale of the hospital, and we expect to see those revenue from the excise tax coming in soon. And I've mentioned this before, that registered deeds offices have been sued, which is one of the consequences of the type of work we do. And I ask how many libraries across North Carolina have been sued for doing their work incorrectly? At a grade sixty-six level, my assistant register deeds would still be lower than the neighboring Ired Oak County's assistant register deeds, but at least we would be coming closer to surrounding counties and hopefully better able to keep capable and quality staff. This would be a three-grade increase, which is lower than other recent grade increases in Alexander County and well within the county's business practices. Additionally, my deputy registered deeds, who signs legal documents and vital records on my behalf, is only on par with a worker at the landfill. In my eyes, the county administration, my deputy is only equivalent with a groundskeeper or waymaster, which I suppose is someone who weighs vehicles at the landfill. I could be wrong, but I do know what my deputy does, and they must work within the general statutes, like I've mentioned. They work daily with lawyers, paralegals, conducting real property business, recording those documents, which could involve determining land ownership. I think most people would say that this is a very important responsibility. Increasing my deputy to a grade sixty-four would be very appropriate and while I believe what my deputies do is more important than some of the positions at that grade level, it would be a step in the right direction in equating job responsibility with grade levels. Step level could be adjusted to where there's no need for salary increases and no need to adjust my budget. And like I said, if you increase the grade, you can go down in steps to keep the salary exactly the same. My whole appeal is to increase the grade levels, not... It can't be denied on the basis of increasing my budget or increasing salaries. Next slide, please. And I will mention this, that not during this job search, but the previous job searches, I've had at least twelve candidates turn down jobs in my office because they couldn't make ends meet with what I can give them and what, you know, what they'd have to pay in childcare. So that kind of eliminates a whole class, usually of younger folk that have children to take care of unless they can get a relative or somehow be able to cope with the increased cost of childcare. But twelve people have turned down positions in my office because they couldn't afford to do it on that scale. And this is a look at the salaries. This is where my office ranks within the county. We rank twenty-six out of thirty departments in pay per employee. That doesn't, this doesn't include my pay, nor does the sheriff's office include the sheriff's pay because this came from the Sunshine Report that was generated by H R back in October twenty-one. And I think if my office were better ranked, what I'm asking for, that we wouldn't really be in the basement of pay per employee in the county. Next slide, please. So my goal has been to tell you of the importance of the Register of Deeds office and to ask for upgrades to my staff's position. Deputy upgrade from a sixty-two to a sixty-four, that would put them on par with the animal control supervisor, children's librarian, or park ranger. If you would increase the assistant ROD to, from a sixty-three to a sixty-six, they'd be on par with administration specialists or detention officers, who, by the way, were upgraded in December of twenty-one or sometime during calendar year twenty-one, detention officers were upgraded. Next slide, please. So how would adjusting my office classification levels be bit... These must be out of order. Is there a slide before that one? It look like that. I'll just, I'll just talk to the... There it is. Is that after the graph?
Yep.
Okay. So what are the benefits to adjusting the classification upgrades in my office? It acknowledges the importance of the Register of Deeds office. It makes my office staffing level more equitable with other county positions. It will enhance staff esprit de corps and morale within the office, which leads to number four, which is making for a better work environment and improves customer experience in our office. And finally, it would draw in more quality candidates to fill positions for the betterment of my office and for the benefit of the county. Okay, next slide, please. Or actually, can you go back this slide? This, this chart, well, that didn't transfer greatly, but this, this graphic shows the collective wages and salary for all positions in my office from fiscal year two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-one. And you can see the, the blue line is what my office was paid for the year that it's over. The orange line is the Consumer Price Index. And the Consumer Price Index is recorded by the U.S. Department of Labor, and this shows price increases. And as you well know, the inflation rate is going through the roof, and so that's just, it's keeping the gap between what my office has been paid relative to two thousand and nine level and what we're paid today. Go ahead, do the next slide. Okay, there was another. So anyway, there was another slide in there, but I'll end with this. My point here today was, one, to tell you an update of my office, where we're at. Second point was to appeal for grade increases to my staff. And as I've stated, this grade increase doesn't have to come with salary increases. But the, the most important thing is, I just want to get this point across. If my office is not as important as I believe it is, and as I've displayed that I think it is with the, the facts of what we have to do in the office, then you need to tell me what, why it's not as important as I think it is. If it is as important as I think it is, then these pay or grade increases are very appropriate, and I would appeal that someone would address that with me. And that's about all I have, unless there's any questions.
Well, good information, and like I said, too, that is something that we look at during the course of time. But we don't want to devalue anybody, all of ours, every one's at forty thousand in your county, running and operating, and you understand where you're, where you're coming from. We've had, I think, is our pay study completed?
Process is not quite complete.
That's what we're doing is, yeah, pay studies, see kind of where we're at versus, yeah, some other things.
Well, from what I've heard, it's a pay study to compare us to other counties. What I did is compare my office and the work we do in my office with the other positions throughout the county and the pay level that those offices are at and the pay, or the grade level, the rank level that my office is at. And I don't see my office grade levels being equal to what other offices. And I tried to portray the importance of the office, and if it's that important, then my staff should have a rank that is more commensurate with other positions in the county that, that I feel have a little more importance. And, and you have to look at the, the grade scale on an importance level, I guess. I don't know. Nobody's ever talked to me. I just look at it and I make some kind of assessment in my head. And I say, well, my deputy does a lot of the same things. They, they stand in my place when I'm not there. They sign certified copies. They make sure that those people are authorized to get the certified copies. They use my seal. They, they act on my behalf. And I'm thinking, well, that's, if, if I'm a seventy-three, well, then they're probably higher than a sixty-two. And, and then, like I said, I compared it a lot to the library. And I'm like, we are like the library. We take legal documents, we record them, index them, put them on the shelf, and we have to do it right. Like I said, we can be sued easily. And we're not talking small amounts of money, like, you know, you know, misshelving a book. You know, it's like, where's the book? Well, it's, you know, ten or twenty dollars. You gotta go get a new book. You know, millions of dollars some of these deals are worth. So we have to do it right. We have to do it correctly. And it's my staff, my deputies, and my assistant who have to do that. And by the way, I don't have an assistant because, like I said, we had a hundred percent turnover in staff. So I only, my longest-serving staff, not counting part-time Don Rudisol, who's been, been there over five years, but you need at least three to five years to serve as an assistant because the assistant basically is me when I'm gone. The deputies do my type of work when I'm gone, and they, they sign the documents or administer oaths or do whatever's necessary. So that's the point I'm trying to get across, and I just wanted to talk to somebody about it. I couldn't do it during the budget process because I made, I tried to contact and failed, never got through, and so that's why I'm here today in a public forum. I didn't want to do it in a public forum, but that's what I'm doing. And I mean, I've even brought it up to some few Commissioners, like, this is what I'm after. And if, and here's my final word. If it's, if I'm looking at this incorrectly, please let me know. Show me where I'm wrong.
I think that's something, like I said, we need to, you need to take a look at. I think a lot of us, when we get our information, our time, we're looking at total budget for, you know, departments. So, you know, I was going to say, send some money back so maybe we can do something with in your budget already to, you know, move things up, so.
And it doesn't have to be any increase. You can take, you could take a sixty-two, and I think there, my staff is a six, seven, and eight, and you can make them a sixty-four, two, three, or four. And they'll, they'll be being paid the same thing. You're just increasing the grade to show the significance of the work we do. That's how I'm looking at it. But like I said, if I'm looking at it incorrectly, show me what I'm not seeing.
Well, I guess I kind of look at, I never looked at pay grade. You know, I look at what we're actually paying someone, but Kelly Mandrick can get something together on that and, you know, we can have some discussion and see, you know, what we can do to correct it, so.
All right, and I appreciate it and thank you for your time. And hopefully I've passed along not only my appeal, but information from our office.
I have a question.
Yep.
On your chart back here from the two thousand and nine, twenty twenty-two, from twenty nineteen to projected maybe twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, there's been a steady increase in wages. Was that reflected in?
That is reflected because I asked for increases to my, because I came in right there at nineteen. You see where nineteen is? That's because when I came into office, you know, my dad had been in office thirty-two years, and so I received, my initial salary was the sixth lowest registered deeds salary in the state. And I said, we're, we're thirty-three in, in, we're thirty-third in population. Why are we, like, why am I almost at the bottom in pay? So they increased my pay, but they also increased staff, staff pay because I was pushing for that, and that's, from nineteen, you see those, those marks going up. That's, that's me just banging on the table, asking for pay increases for my staff. And, and that was necessary, and that chart shows why that was necessary because we can't keep up with the Consumer Price Index. I did a, I did some assessment, and a registered deeds staff in two thousand and nine would go into Food Line with a hundred dollars. My staff today can go into Food Line with eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents because of the Consumer Price Increases. So that's what I'm saying. You know, pay increases would be nice and it would be appropriate, but we've gotten some over the years and we've narrowed the gap somewhat. So now I'm mainly asking for the, the grade increases, which also comes along with a wider range, a higher range. The, a deputy or an assistant can look to ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road and say, well, I can make this if I can stick with it for ten or fifteen years. You know, maybe I want to try to, to stay with the office, but like I said, I've had a hundred percent turnover. Three of my staff, one retired, one quit, or kind of two quit. Three of my staff, one retired, one quit, or kind of two quit. I got to hire Don back as a part-time thanks to you. And without Don being there as the, you know, the, to keep us together, to teach the new people a lot of the things that she knows. But like I said, they're young, energetic and very bright. I, I think I've lucked out because of the, the pay I've been able to offer. It, it hadn't been that appealing. It's better appealing now because of the blue lines going up, but I can offer better pay to keep better staff, so.
Well, we've tried, you know, when you came in, you know, we give some increase to your salary too.
Right.
Along with some of the other, we're trying to, speaking for myself, which for other board members too, we're trying to pay everybody and try to increase, but, you know, we can't do everybody completely across the board. But from what you're saying, then you're just really talking about what the grade itself is.
Right.
Versus, you know, payment and salary, so. And why don't we just get a five percent, is that what it's called?
The next, next paper option.
Yeah, the next paper. So, you know, we're trying, we want to try to work to get there, so sometimes it takes, you know, just a little bit of time. We're not Arden County, you're on top of it. Our's going to be slower, but we want to, you know, try to do what we can to do, so.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Then next on the business, recognize, uh, county manager for rescheduling September twelfth commissioner meeting to September nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to reschedule the September twelfth meeting to September nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. As you presented.
Okay, I guess we need to, uh, motion.
Motion, yes, Chairman.
I'll make a motion, then we reschedule our meeting. Anything to say?
Second.
Yeah, motion second, any question? Anyone that's going to be?
Ken just told, Ken just told me he might not be there because he's going to be in Arden, and I just asked him if I could be here next to back, maybe I'd do it.
Yeah.
So, because you know, it's a big office. I'll never.
Big deal.
So if I'm not here, it's because I snuck in, get a big old suitcase.
Everybody can't go, but. Okay, all in favor of Ray changing the meeting major out here? So these September nineteenth, not swish. Next on business, number six, budget ordinance amendments, number four, number six, and our project, project budget ordinance, P two and P three, recognize county manager Ray French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number four is the budget with remaining balance of March two thousand and twenty-one, contract to expand broadband service in the county. Contract work began in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, but should be completed during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to decrease detention center budget for a portion of the COVID mitigation grant that is to be spent in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Budget amendment number five is to increase the BSS budget for the new state funding authorization of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, low-income household water assistance program and to provide citizens with emergency water assistance. Number, budget amendment number six is to increase fire emergency service budget for additional five thousand dollars per month payments to Ellendale and Hidnite, fire departments for responding to accidental calls. Project budget ordinance, P two, is for the Alexander County Industrial Park. There's four hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. But the, that total amount came from grants, part of that from the adolescent regional commission, PRC, and part to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Policy. And that's for Alexander Industrial Park Sewer Project. And then P three is for the Alexander Capital Project Budget Ordinance, Alexander County Housing, our teachers downtown revitalization project of the, what we call the Chamber Building for a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty, can, so it comes from the Department of Commerce, Rural Transformation Grant, and then there'd be a hundred thousand dollars in the general fund paid for renovations to those buildings. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the budget amendments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, we approve budget ordinance amendments, number four through six, and project budget ordinance, P dash two and P dash three, as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any, uh, statement? Being done, I think the motion approved, Ray's right here. Motion, Jay, to mention, thank you, Jim. Moving on to number seven, board appointments and reappointments, recognize county manager Ray, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Alexander County ADC Board reappointed Gerald Davis for three years.
Motion approved. Second. Motion second, all in favor, Ray's right here. Motion, Jerry, mention, thank you, Jim. Other business, our county managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, you heard a, an update and estimate on Besseman Park. And I was going to ask the board, do you want us to try to pursue a part of grant or part of the funding for that project? Project estimated cost was about one point three billion. Part of grants will be, next round will be due next spring and then we'll find out in June, July of next, of next year. Part of grants usually run up to, apply for up to five hundred thousand. Doesn't mean we'll get it, but we could have a possibility of getting five hundred thousand dollars. So I was going to ask the board what their wishes were about the part of grant. I know Besseman Park is needing a lot of, a lot, and.
Mr. Chairman, would that, would that allow some renovations to, to proceed since the project's going to be significantly more than that?
If we do, we could use it, we could do a little bit. It could be useful, we got to match it, that five hundred thousand, if we got it with five hundred thousand, so we would have a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay, number six, because, you know, hey, let's, I mean, which I'm all about, I'm all about applying for part of grant. I mean, I'm all about any grant that we can take some money from, you know, but that puts us a year from now.
I know.
Even finding out if we get it.
Right, I know.
And then, you know, so we're talking a year and a half, two years before anything happens.
Right. If you don't, I mean, you don't want supply, that's fine, I just wanted to ask about it.
What was the projected cost of it?
One, one point three billion.
So technically, three hundred thousand renovation could take place?
Yes, sir. And part of that is, is going to be demolition, there's, you know, as we talked about, there's like picnic shelter and things like that.
That's bad.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I was.
Everything I said before when I was a kid. Nothing more to blame than that time.
But, I mean, so, so we could potentially do, we could potentially do some of the more pressing repairs.
Yes, sir, we could talk to the engineer.
Not necessarily, not necessarily the bigger items, which are, you know, lights and repaving and.
That's correct.
You know, but there are some things that we could go ahead and do to make it more usable.
Yes.
Because that's.
Why don't, my dear Josh, why don't we get a kind of a pricing together of doing some of the things that need to be done and let us decide at the next meeting?
Okay.
We want to have a, that.
You know, I mean, and it could be, I mean, and, you know, the project could kind of be done in two phases. One, immediate, you know, up until.
Amount, about the span, and then.
Right, up into a circummount. And then phase two, we wait to see if we get a grant. Could get, you know, get a part of grant for however much.
Just kind of see what we can do for the three hundred thousand.
I'll, I'll talk to Benji and get a list of things and then get back to the budget and see.
All right, thank you.
Because, because I don't, I don't think, I mean, the, exactly what, exactly what we're going to do hasn't been.
Right.
Determined to this point. So there's still some flexibility as to what, you know, we know what the needs are, but we still haven't made, you know, absolute determinations pertaining to, you know, what, what exactly this would be.
We could come back to that at the next meeting if you have a little bit.
Well, I'll talk to Benji about it.
All right.
You have, on the, the packet have dates for Foundation Forward dedication. As you're all aware, there were several monument that had like Declaration of Independence and those items. And they, the future, uh, the Foundation Forward wanted to do a dedication and dedicate all those things in separate ceremony other than walking away and did it. So if you could be looking, checking your calendars and let Jamie know, we'll try to nail something down, we don't have to do it right now. I just want to mention it to you so you can be thinking about it. Also, the Gwaltney building is, I mean, needs, has some issues. And I talked with the owner of the, of the building. They do the elections there and the building's used. He's reaching out for some kind of assistance. And I didn't know if you want to do something like a small community grant or something small amounts, like a thousand dollars or something along those lines to help them maintain that building because he, that's, he makes a little, just very little, whatever you want it, so.
Help, help me here, do we pay a fee to use that for elections?
A very small fee.
Very small. But, you know, my, my only concern is there are other buildings there around the county that are, that are privately owned or on, on mine, or the community service organization or something like that. And my only consideration would be, we need to be very careful not to pick and choose who we, you know, who we might do a local court of book grant for. And, you know, make sure we don't leave someone out.
Right.
That may be in the same, I mean, maybe in the same situation, you know. My, my example would be, you know, Bethlehem Rutean Building in Bethlehem. You know, they, they do fundraisers to keep lights on continuously.
Right.
And, um, you know, there's the L W building, there's, um, well, there's back, you know, there are little places off, you know, staying, there's places all, you know, all around the county that, that are, where we've got buildings that the community's used, but most of which need a little bit, a little bit of loving.
Right, right.
But we will be using it as a voting place.
Yes, sir.
A little bit. I think we kind of need to sort of maintain that, that's my opinion, because voting's an important thing, people going in and out. And we want to try to do our part, it's not a lot, but we do a little bit, but, you know, not wanting to get into a whole big thing, but if there is a dire need somewhere, you know, I think we need to.
Well, they, they need a roof on, I think, that costs, but they were going to do asphalt shingles, but now I think they decided to do, um, metal roofing and therefore to cost a lot less. And the maintenance will be just unbelievably so much cheaper for them every year.
That building's been down for a while, too, so.
Yeah, the county used to use it for county recreation and everything else, just like they did every Bethlehem and it remained in it. And back when everybody was really active, all those buildings were being used and they had a lot more.
And a lot of them were paid for by the community members.
That's exactly right.
Because, you know, Bethlehem community building, there's a storage building behind it, and I happen to know the contractor that set the trusses and built a roof on it and didn't charge for it.
Didn't charge for it.
Not going to mention any names.
Most of them did that, and it's all, they've all been, they've all been for good for the community and a lot of those people, it's just like everything else, just like the fire departments and everything else, but people are just, I'm telling you, tears are fading away.
It's a different day.
Different day.
People can't afford to start their work and be rushed. Yeah, I think, help them. And maybe we set some kind of a name word, someone can request and rewrite it based on their need, you know, going forward if there is other risks, you know.
Because there's community grants before.
I don't know if any of you want to go take a look at it sometime, we could go out there and take a look. We could also possibly do that sometime.
I'll be glad to hear what you have to do.
Field drift's always good.
Yeah, okay.
Always good, good place to take them anyway, too.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, um, there's a fire chiefs meeting on August twenty-third at the Emergency Services Building at seven o'clock. So just wanted to mention that to you, try to make sure that's on the calendar or something together to be great. And then I have some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mark has already left, but I had some use of that, maybe someone else heard it too. I think I could communicate. It's the only point I've heard, Ray's right, grateful.
Yeah.
And I doubt a lot of people, so I want to thank all of us, Fire Department, for the job that they do and answering the call, and some of the calls. You know, sometimes it may not be as bad, sometimes it's worse, and I just appreciate everybody that's here tonight, appreciate you coming to our meeting. And we'll try to team that, usually, you know, see if I can make it down, because some of those, appreciate what you guys did for us. Little things.
We have a consent agenda, we also have the fees, fee approvals requested by the Health Department.
Okay. We're going to, uh, need to, uh, need to have four here. Before yours is consented and they vote to approve the Health Department.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman making a motion to approve the Alexander County Public Health fee increase. Second.
Okay, a motion in a second, all in favor, Ray's right here. Motion, Jay, to mention, thank you, Jim. At this time, I entertain the motion to approve our consented D S A package.
Motion to approve, as presented.
A motion, a second.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Being then, all in favor, Ray's right here. Thank you, Jim, motion, Jerry, you men. At this time, I would make a motion to adjourn the closing session. Per statute, N C G S one four three, through eight, four five and six, of economic development, contractual personnel, that's that, and we'll re-adjourn before adjournment. A second, all in favor, Ray's right here. We're now at close session, thank you.